I have that government job. It's like that I can tell you.
I don't know, is everything gonna be over here?
No.
I left a little floppy tab.
So it'll just show everything that's up there?
For now.
For now.
Do I turn it off?
Do what?
Do I need to turn it off?
Uh. Can I turn it off then?
That's good. One and a half minutes. One and a half minutes.
Yep.
Three, seven, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Right.
Then I'll be all the CDX effect.
I'm sure.
It's like, it's like a shit. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You gotta, you know, touch your lips.
All right, everybody, welcome to the Kechai City Council meeting. Today is Thursday, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. We will go ahead and get started. Debbie, could you please call roll?
Matt, we're.
Here.
Hi, Edson.
Here.
Kendra Ball, Bruce.
Here.
Paul, Florida.
Here.
We have a Florida, um, please stand, like, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to approving tonight's agenda at council. Any questions about tonight's agenda? I do want to ask that we have an executive session for ten minutes for a non-elected person. If, uh, you have no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve the agenda as written with, with an executive session item eleven for non-elected personnel.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
I have a motion by Todd, second by Paul. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries four O. Moving on to approving tonight's consent agenda. Council, any questions about tonight's consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Matt, second by Kendra. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries four O. Moving on to the communications section. Kechai civic groups or committees? Do we have any civic groups or committees here to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. Uh, to Kechai good news. Council, any Kechai good news?
Yes, I have some.
Matt, welcome back.
I am glad to be back.
We're glad you're back.
That's, uh, good to be back.
Oh.
So thank you.
Is that your name?
Yep. Hey, right now, that's good news.
I mean, that's really good news.
It's really good news. No, no pun intended, I'm back.
Yeah. Has. Well, uh, that is great news and I'm very glad about that, yes. Any.
Collected grown.
Yes, collected grown. Any other Kechai good news? I mean, your kids made the Ark Valley newspaper from page.
Yeah, Jake and Carly from the garage sale, they made the Kechai lab, so big shout out to Taylor if he's around, but, uh, also the Ark Valley News, uh, made the front page, same article. So I thought that was really neat. And as a proud dad moment, I took it to work and showed everybody that I worked with.
As you should. Awesome. Well, um, I want to highlight Card. They were, um, on Kek news this morning because they have a master in glass, Danny Pope, uh, I've met him this weekend. So stop by, um, if you can see him. Master in glass art is a very, very hard title to get to, so, um, please stop by. Any other Kechai good news staff? I mean, you always do good work, so. Always. All right, moving on to public comments. We have public comments this evening. Stan, Paul, Scott. Scott, five minutes on my timer, whenever you're ready.
The name, council, mayor. What do you guys?
Staff.
Esteemed staff. Um, Dr. Doug Bonison, the five point one Kechai, uh, or Brick Creek Drive. And I just wanna share, this is, this is good tonight, okay? This is good. Um, I've been reading a book, the Lord's Men Economy, uh, reading a book called London Council on Government. Okay? And I've been humbled. And, um, I just wanna share some things. And I just wanna ask for forgiveness for me and for the city, for our, for all the people in, in town. Okay? So if I can just get through this. I'm kinda a crier anyway. Uh, it says in Romans thirteen, if every subject, every soul be subject to governing authorities, don't resist them, if you do, you resist God. This is called lawlessness. We know about lawlessness, Mr., please, person. How about you have no, no lawlessness in your town? You know? Um, seven things the Lord hates, he who sows discord among the brethren. And a false witness speaks lies, and he that sows discord, it's not well. And that's called tailbaring accusation, slandering, aggravating everything. And I wanna, I don't ask for forgiveness. Um, for me and for the, just the, the city, uh, the people, uh, forgiveness for not speaking well about authority. You guys are here for a reason. You guys are supposed to be here, and we need to honor you, and we need to support you, um, because you guys have gifts that we don't. And I just wanna, um, I just wanna say that and ask for forgiveness right now. Um. See this in the clinic, this is interesting, the words of the tale bearer is wounds that go down as innermost parts of the belly. Also called choice morsels, when people talk about other things about, when other people do something wrong and then you tell other people about it, it's called tailbaring. It has a medical issue. And it's called wounds in the belly. I have a patient right now, she has wounds in the belly, she can't, they can't figure out what's wrong with her. They've been inside, up, down, they can't figure out. And I asked her in the clinic, I said, can I ask you a question? I said, are you participating in tailbearing? She goes, what? I go, are you gossiping, listening to gossip? She goes, like, my coworker talking about her husband? And I said, yeah. And she goes, yeah? I said, why don't we just walk away? Well, guess what? Her belly pain after years is getting better. Because she's changing what's going in. Forgive us and the people of Kechai for tailbaring. Sorry, forgive us. Um, Romans two one, you're inexcusable, or whoever you judge or accuses, you condemn yourself and you're a doer of the exact same thing. Um. Forgiveness, forgiveness for accusation. When somebody accuses somebody else, it's not right, because they're actually a doer of the exact same thing, but they wanna probably blame on somebody else to take, to take the focus off of them. It's not right. Um, sorry, ask for forgiveness. Um. So verse it says righteousness exalt a nation, or a state, or a town. Righteousness is based on addition and multiplication, not subtraction and division. No one who ever subtracted and divided or built anything, because a house divided cannot stand. And when people come together with their gifts and the resources, you can build things. But if there's people that are tearing things down, you can't build. It's like, you're trying to, you're going up, what's it called? Upstream in a peanut butter river. That's just, that's just hard. Um, and then I wanna say, here is first Timothy two, it says, I short you therefore, all supplications, prayers, intercession, and giving thanks be made for all men, especially for kings and those in authority, you guys. And you guys, because you guys are ruling over us, and thank you for what you do. I could never do what you do. God bless you guys. I mean, I don't have the gift. I just thank you that you guys had a gift and an understanding and, and just be able to work through things and to guide things, so I appreciate that. Um, and the, and why do you do that? Why you pray for your leaders? It's so they feel peaceable and live a quiet life. It just goes well. There's like, there's no strife. You can sleep at night, because you're not running your head through all these situations, so. Anyway, um, can I pray? Is that okay? Father, I just come to you and I just thank you for the leaders here in the city. Um, Father, I just pray for them. And I pray to give them wisdom. That, we're all human, we're all trying. Um, guide them, guide them in the direction that is life and there's addition and multiplication. And, um, there's blessing. I want the city to grow, we want it to be prosperous. How about having extra money in the, in the bank, in all the different categories? It's extra, it's not just minimal. Um, and I just, uh, thank you for these people, uh, bring them to their mind, mind, we pray for them. And, um, pray to the hearts of the people of Kechai, we pray in for our leaders, so that we can be a leader in the area, so that other cities may come to us and ask, hey, what's going on? That we can be alike and we can be, uh, an example. And just thank you, it's just, thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comments? Yes, we will go ahead and public, close public comment for the evening and move on to item seven A, approval of bid for gas line extension. Matt?
Mayor and council, uh, we have talked about this briefly in the past. We have known that there needs to be some gas line upgrades, we just didn't think we needed to do it quite this soon. Otherwise, we would have included it in the, uh, CIP funds for this year's budget process. Uh, however, uh, we have some additional businesses going in, our industrial park is filling up. Last year, we had some pressure issues out there. Thomas and his guys upgraded some regulators, were able to push more pressure through the small lines that we had, specifically going underneath the railroad track to get more, I guess, Thomas, would you call it volume or just pressure up to that area, which helps resolve some of those issues? Now that we have additional, uh, commercial buildings going into our industrial park, we know there's gonna be greater strain, so we wanna get ahead of that, not be behind the ball. So we're pushing this upgrade up at Thomas's request to get this done before the winter months come. Our concern would be that if we have a very cold winter, we drop below those pressures, it affects the regulators out there, and it just leads to all kinds of problem for providing supply out there. So even though it was not a budgeted item, this is why we have our reserve funds, is for things like this, uh, that come up. We're not saying we weren't anticipating them, they just come up sooner than we had anticipated. I've been talking to Thomas, he feels now's the good time to do it, right before winter, so we can get ahead of it and, uh, won't have any issues out there this winter or supply issues as that industrial park continues to grow. So, uh, we have ample money and reserve funds for it, that's what that money is there for, and I will let Thomas speak to anything that he would like to add to that.
I pretty much covered it. Any other questions on, you know, kinda what we found, what, what we, what we did to try to, you know, mitigate the problem? You know, when you have bigger corporations come in, they use a lot more gas than, than your homes do. I mean, I think me and your engineering out there alone during the winters, there's more than almost every one of our homes put together, so, uh, it can be a substantial strain on, on the gas line, so. Just try to stay ahead of the curve and we know we have residents out there too, even though we don't always see them, they, they are out there, so.
Thomas, do you have what you need, or are things in work enough with the railroad that we, we're gonna be able to make that work?
So we reached out to USDI, which we already use as a contractor. Uh, they are doing the engineering for any of the railroad tracks. Obviously, they have better contacts than me, um, they were able to get all of Union Pacific in two days, I couldn't do it in six months. Um, I'm not important enough, I guess. Uh, they deal with them all the time though, so they have, you know, those numbers on hand. Um, so they're already, um, doing the engineering. Uh, they submitted a bid also, but they weren't gonna be able to get it to until probably next summer, at the earliest. Uh, if those businesses start coming in, um, we might need to, you know, potentially, um, have upgraded it sooner. Um, that, and if there's any, any problems, um, since it is the one line, it's the only line, um, since we don't have any loop portions. If for some reason, something happened and they weren't able to get it out there, we would lose everything east of the railroad tracks, so. If, if that was to happen, it'd be better to do that in warmer weather and not when it's thirty degrees outside and, or colder, so.
Any other questions, council? Do you have a timeline for that project?
Um, it's going to take them about four to six weeks to get the materials in. Um, once they get the materials in, it should only take them anywhere from two to three weeks. So they have, they'll bring in a bunch of crews, um, where I know if everybody's seen us do the downtown project, we had to weld forty foot joints at the time. They're gonna throw in five hundred foot rolls. They have the machines to straighten that pipe out, they're gonna bore it, probably potentially all ends, there's no trenching, and they'll just open up where they need to make those connections into our, into our, into our housing developments and into the commercial buildings, and they'll make those lines then. So. That, that's the goal.
Are we seeing any supply chain issues right now with that stuff, with everything going on?
Everything has supply chain issues right now. It, it has, I mean, I'd like to say that it, it did get a little better since COVID, but it's still not great. I mean, the fire hydrants that we had down here, for instance, they got hit, uh, that Friday, four to six weeks for brand new fire hydrant. So if you don't see one out there for a while, and that's just replacement, that's not even a whole fire hydrant. So everything is that way, four to six weeks to three months, it's.
So it could be pushed up longer potentially because of the supply issue? I mean, four to six weeks to get to the stuff that it.
Potentially, um, but I do have, I do, I know they don't want to, but I do have about two thousand feet of six inch behind my shop, uh, forty foot joints, so they can work with what they got, if, if we, if we hit that point, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have any indication of these supply chain issues, they haven't indicated that, um, other than just, I think, mobilizing and getting everything out here to do the project. So on your agenda item there, Thomas did solicit three bids, uh, as per policy, one from NPL, USDI, and Dooling Construction. Dooling Construction, uh, I guess currently had too much work, they did not bid on it, so that left us with NPL and USDI, who Thomas has pretty confidence in, he's worked with them before, and that's kinda their business, uh, what they both do, so. The recommendation from SAP is that you approve the bid for two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred eighty dollars and authorize the public works director to sign.
Any further questions, council, or I would entertain a motion?
I make a recommendation, approve the public works director to sign the agreement with NPL, and not, not to exceed two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred eighty dollars for the upgrades and replacements of gas lines along Kechai Road and in the city of Kechai.
I have a second.
One second.
I have a motion by Matt, second by Todd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries four O. Moving on to approval of purchasing public works vehicle.
Mayor and council, uh, this will be a purchase for Public Works Department, something that was included in the twenty twenty-five budget as part of the CIP program. Thomas sent out for bids with the specs that he needed in the truck. Uh, he received three, uh, four bids he had sent out, Rustiak, Cable Delmer, Delmer, Loopers, and Mel Hamilton, no longer does government pricing. He, uh, settled on the Chevy truck from Lubr Chevrolet in Chenee, uh, for an amount not to, not to exceed sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. And Thomas is here to comment or take any questions that you may have.
Is it pretty?
Uh, it's like the rest of public works.
So it's gonna get dirty, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
It's, it's a work truck, it does the work, yeah.
I'm a girl, head out.
I mean, this one, so we're, we've gotten to the point where we're just gonna start equipping all of our trucks with crew cabs and also with utility beds. Um, the days of being able to operate Kechai with a Ford Ranger and try to, you know, tote things around with it, and I know everybody thinks Ford Rangers are, are really powerful, but, uh, they're really hot, so, uh, uh, that way we can put on, you know, water meters, gas meters, whatever, a guy can show up and basically that's going to be our response vehicles for now on, so. We're gonna look apart of these big utility or, in our own city, we probably should have those things ready for when we show up.
Thomas, I know in our conversation just a few minutes ago, you were telling me just how many more hours and where and where we're putting on equipment. Can you kind of just speak to that so the community has kind of an understanding of what that looks like?
Yeah, so I wanted to look back on all the years on the trucks that we have traded in, the miles they had on them versus what we've put on these vehicles over the last five or six years since I've been the public works director. I'm kind of a numbers guy, I like to see where things are going. Um, so when I started, we had three vehicles, um, that were for public works, we had four people here, um, since then, we've added, we have five vehicles. If you add the total hours plus the time traveled, um, we've, we've, those original trucks were about a quarter million miles, um, across all three. Um, with the five vehicles we've had, we've put over a half a million miles on the vehicles that we have, um, based on hours and the work that we're doing now versus the work that was being done before. So a lot more time in the vehicles, a lot more getting around the places and, and just doing things, so, um, a significant increase when you double. And I'm only, I think, was this year six? So I'm only halfway through this versus the ten years, could we keep it for ten years? So that gives me a good lot guideline on looking at, okay, how many miles, how many hours are we spending in these vehicles? What's going on with them? Um, and so I do a, a, a decent breakdown of, you know, how often where it goes and where we're going, so.
Thank you.
Other questions, council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve the public works director to purchase the requested Chevy twenty-five hundred truck from Lubr Chevrolet in Chenee in remount, not to exceed sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars.
I have a second.
Oh, second.
I have a motion by Todd, second by Paul, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries four O. You have a truck. Um, moving on.
You all have a truck, I don't have a truck, you guys have a truck.
Okay, the city has a truck. Moving on to old business, we have no old business, moving on to council reports. Does other council members have a report?
Okay. Um, I attended, uh, the SCAC meeting, or Central County Association of Cities, on nine thirteen, that was held in Bentley. Um, at this meeting, Second Light, or the Multi Agency Center, or otherwise known as the MAC, in, uh, Wichita, came and spoke about what they've been doing, um, with the school they had purchased for the Multi Agency Center. Um, they were talking about, um, the population that they serve and how they're still struggling with, um, finding places for animals to go at night. That's still a pretty big struggle, even though, um, they've had about, uh, Second Light took over recently, but, um, this, the struggle for animals has been going on since they started. Uh, they also don't have enough beds, uh, to serve the population of males, and this facility also does not house families. And that is a big barrier that Wichita has, um, Central County in general has a huge barrier of, for family population who is homeless. So, um, that is a, still an ongoing issue that they're trying to address, but right now, that center is not, um, housing those, so. It was great, great, uh, uh, great meeting, uh, the city, all the cities gave an update, as well as the county, and, um, the other meeting I attended, that was on nine fifteen, for REAP Steering Committee, and again, we just discussed upcoming events and meetings. Um, items that I worked on, again, I attended city meetings, uh, sign checks, discussion about REAP, ongoing. Um, I do wanna make an announcement that I will not be at the next city council meeting. I had the opportunity to represent the city and, uh, REAP, or the Regional Economic Area Partnership, at the Wichita Chamber of Commerce City to City Trip in Detroit. Um, and this is being completely funded by the REAP organization, um, as I'm the current chair this year. I look forward to bringing back all of the information that I, um, get from them, and have a great meeting on that night, so. Uh, make sure you attend the Kechai Playhouse, um, the farmers market unfortunately ended today, um, so I hope you were all able to get out sometime this season. Uh, thank you very much for the Kechai Chamber of Commerce for hosting that again this year, and we hope to make it bigger and better next year. Um, and again, the Arts Council is participating in Adopt a Cause fundraiser, where you have a chance to win one of two cars. Tickets are ten dollars each, and they're available for purchase at Chino's or at Cindy's Gold Shop. Um, tickets are on sale until November seventeenth, and the drawing is, I believe, December seventeenth. I think it's a month after that ends. And that's my council report. Tried to jump fast. So, um, if we have no other council reports, we'll move on to staff reports, public works. Hi, Thomas.
Hello. I'm gonna talk for all night. Uh, busy, busy, a lot of it's repetitive stuff. Um, the biggest thing on the list is the locates. So we've, we've, uh, taken on a significant amount of locates this year. Uh, we are already, have surpassed the locate full we've ever located in this city in the past. Um, we're currently over fifteen hundred locates. If we cross the two thousand threshold, we actually move up a tier with the KCC and, and our, our, uh, our, uh, lead control. And then we also have to submit to the KCC that we hit over that two thousand mark, they'll come in and check and make sure, you know, that we're not experiencing extra hits. Um, so we're on pace to surpass that by quite a bit. Um, I was hoping that once winter, the fall would come in, that those would slow down. Um, it doesn't seem like it, uh, then next year, with everything that we got going on, um, looks like it's gonna be a significant increase, so. Um, those locates can take anywhere from, you know, thirty minutes to an hour, sometimes three, four hours. Um, I know that the guys just went out and located pretty much all of, uh, meter engineering, that's about a, a day, day and a half task. So if you think about a hundred and fifty hours, just in a hundred and fifty locates, that's pretty much one guy, you know, doing nothing but locate every day. So, um, then, you know, we both, we need city park, uh, did that twice, we tried to move city hall every week. Um, pulled out sand and dirt roads, degraded dirt roads twice, um, started that again today. Um, same old chlorine residuals that we do, uh, the guys clean storm, um, stormwater inlets after the rains. Um, we did add concrete to the berm and the rocks of the park, uh, so added, cleaned and fixed the, the fountain at the park. So we put in a plastic novel that busted, so went back and got brass one. Uh, but yeah, so a lot of the same things, you know, met with a lot of contractors, downtown project, that was some contractors about trimming trees along downtown also, um, so. Bids for the trucks, lots, lots of time on the phone for me, the guys, you know, do a great job out there doing all the things that I don't get out to do anymore, so, um. Any other questions, or a lot of repetitive stuff every month, so not too exciting.
Very exciting. Seeing none, thank you.
Yeah.
Elise.
Well, police department's pretty short this week. Uh, we're aware of the crash that took place on, uh, South Auburn, September twelfth. Um, I can't go into the details, but, uh, that is now under criminal investigation. Uh, we'll work with some other agencies to, uh, bring justice for that accident scene. Unfortunately, a life was lost. The preliminary report on that, uh, five thousand pound truck was able to break off two telethon poles and dislodge a fire hydrant, uh, to about seventy-five feet. That's a lot of energy, a lot of speed, so, uh, we're looking into that. Um, again, we got some agencies analyzing some things, we have search warrants on the vehicle, we'll pull in information down that car's speed, so, uh, more to come on that. Um, this month I was elected, uh, president of Kansas Peace Altar Association, so a little milestone there, uh, I've been working on that for about five years, working with the association. Uh, it's the Lawless Law Enforcement Association State of Kansas, thirty-two hundred plus members. Um, so my duties are gonna pick up a little bit this legislative sea, uh, season, this testifying in front of the House and committee, and, uh, making sure that we'll pass and sound legislation in the state. Um, the other thing we do is we dedicate a lot to, uh, train solutions to the state of Kansas as well, so, uh, probably see some training show up here in Kechai and then, you know, around the region, but, uh, that was a good thing. Um, cheering up for Halloween, uh, officers are excited about that, so we're, we'll be out and about and probably have a booth set up here, maybe over the middle of this church, but, uh, we'll be out for that. Uh, and then we're going to try to squeeze in one last movie in the park. I apologize, we've been a little, uh, busy on the caseload with, uh, with major cases that have came through the last couple months, but, uh, we're planning on knocking off one more, and it'll be a good time, probably Halloween, but, so. Details on that to come. Um, we're also working towards new community policing ideas for next year, probably some fun stuff coming out. I intend on having probably a monthly fishing derby for the kids and, uh, obviously the movie in the park, or the car show, some stuff like that, so, uh, stay tuned for those, uh, those things. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Planning zoning stormwater, clean enforcement, anything dust and dust?
Not a lot.
It's not a lot, but. Uh, zoning, we have five cases to be heard in October. We do have five members on the commission itself, we'll listen to. Um, IT, uh, two new computers came in, one for Chris, one for the bullpen over in the police department. I believe one for Chris is working well for you so far. I haven't heard any complaints from PD for the bullpen, so that's a plus. Relevant audio was supposed to come out on Tuesday this week to work further on the system in the closet. If they came here, I missed them, so I have to follow up with them tomorrow to see if they actually showed up. Um, stormwater, on September third and fourth, I attended the Kansas Area Flood Plane Managers Conference. Uh, lots of information regarding the flood plane, stormwater, that kind of stuff, and yes, is, is as exciting as it sounds, talking about floodwaters. Uh, code enforcement, complaints are still slowing down. I haven't had any in the past month, um, so that's great, but that's about it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Administration.
Mayor and council, I don't have a lot to add. Uh, the chief did mention that we did have a fatality accident on Oliver down there a couple weeks ago. It damaged two of the telephone poles, which are taken care of. I just found out today that it did some damage to the sidewalk, it punched a hole in it. I just learned that late today. I don't know if Thomas had seen that yet or not, but punched a hole in the sidewalk and cracked the sidewalk. So we will be getting that replaced. We're getting bids for it right now. There's some other costs associated with repairing some of the damage that was done, the crosswalk is damaged down there, so all those costs that the city incurs will be submitted back to the insurance. I've already contacted the insurance company, uh, got a claim number, so we will file to get recovery for those damages that were caused down there. It's been a busy month. It's been a busy week. Thomas, several of his guys, Debbie and Chris, we're all out in training this week and we realized about five minutes after we came into the office on Tuesday, when they were gone, how much we appreciate them around here. So just kind of Dustin and I and, uh, Ben up at the front desk, we had Casey come over and fill in, but, uh, these ladies do a lot and man, they keep us straight around here, so we really missed them. I just want to thank Thomas for his leadership, his guys, they are just out there working all day long. Uh, there's not much rest that goes on. Chief, I want to thank him for his leadership. They've had a tough month with some calls, uh, fatality accidents are always tough to deal with. It's things that you don't just leave at work, you take those home with you. Uh, they, they never go away, so I appreciate his leadership and what he provides for his guys, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. All right. Executive session.
And how, how long?
Ten.
Madam Mayor, I mean, we go into executive session. The subject to be discussed during the executive session is non-elected personnel. Justification for closing the meeting and discussion related to non-elected personnel matters. The time and place in which the open meeting shall resume is seven forty-two. Uh, non-elected personnel is per Kansas State Statute, KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one.
Why? Do I have a second to that? Second. I have a motion, uh, by Todd, second by Kendra. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's for her. We are in executive session.
Thank you.